You guys ready?
We got more stuff not working.
Being seven oh two, I'm gonna bring the Dunbar Board of Selectmen.
Seven oh two.
To order. For September fifth, is that right?
Yep.
September fifth, twenty twenty four. All three of selectmen are here, the town minister is here. And we have Mr. Martel videotaping for the public. And Linda Nickerson will upload those to YouTube and the Dunbar website for the public. Gentlemen, I have some old business.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August twenty second, point one four as amended.
I'll second. Motion been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? We should have that first, huh?
I'll make another motion to approve the regular. You want me to do these both together? Um, approve the regular and non-public meeting, special meeting minutes of August twentieth, twenty twenty four.
Unsealed, correct?
Correct. Go resecond them.
I'll second. Second, any discussion? They all look good to me, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that takes care of the meeting minutes. I'm gonna have to conduct a public comment for anybody that's not on the agenda. Any public comment from the room? Okay, we'll give you another chance at the end of the meeting, in case you come up with something during the meeting. Okay, first thing on the agenda tonight is John Trotter, the moderator, and Jennifer Corner, the town clerk, for an election update. From the department.
Thank you gentlemen for allowing us to be present. Guide everybody an update for the public. Jennifer and I did meet on Monday of this past week. We have just again inform everyone, Woody and his crew are ready to, they're gonna be beginning their accumulation of, yeah, accumulation of equipment. They'll be, they should be back at the school by three thirty in the afternoon. And I'm asking it, all three of you gentlemen or whoever can attend to assist us in setting up as well, like we've done in the past. We've asked Woody to bring all the booths up from the storage bins or storage trailer. The thought is so that we can do an inventory in September, not wait till November. If some of those curtains are rotted or something, because in November, we're gonna need, by my calculations, like twenty-two booths. So we're gonna need, we need to look at everything, so give us an opportunity to look at it now.
I know last time we were putting away there, we were all pretty in shape.
Yeah, but again, though, we've only been really using ten of them.
Right.
So there's been five that, you know, we haven't, haven't put in our eyes on it. It's a good time to do it.
Yep.
Just something we're gonna go through. I would ask that you gentlemen kind of review your duties as selectmen, please. Justin, you'll be there.
Yep.
All day.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not denied from being there this time.
Okay.
He has missed quite a few.
Yeah.
Yeah, he couldn't be at, that's fine. And the one before is on vacation. I gotta start planning my vacations back.
Yeah. So again, if I, if I could just, again, in the book, it does have a refresher of your duties. And I know a couple of you do work as ballot clerks as well. And Linda has, excuse me, Jennifer has sent out the reminder and the, uh...
She sent some bullet points out earlier.
Correct, yeah. So again, just to refresh your memory of the new procedure, state the name, state the address, repeat the name, repeat the address. So again, just to, so we're trying to stay in compliance with everything.
Okay.
The, um, again, yeah, we'll have two ballot boxes, again, Democrat, Republican, we'll sort them then, as we're taking them in. They'll help us at the end of the evening, being able to sort and count the ballots. I did mention the ballot clerks, again, we'll have the all-for-one setup as well. The tent, little tent, and that does count as a ballot, a balloting booth as well for November.
Right, really, I've noticed over the last several elections, those little stand-ups, they, they're so popular, they're so easy to go, get in and get out.
Yes, yeah, for sure. So, and I think that's what I, I've observed too, it seems like more people will use that versus going behind.
Especially if you put them a little bit higher, so you can stand out.
Yeah, so. The number of absentee ballots, again, that's ongoing. Jennifer reports those are still coming in. I don't believe there's any ongoing out anymore.
How many?
Oh, so they're both, it's ongoing, work in progress. I mentioned again, reviewing your duties. The other thing I asked Jennifer to do, I know that she had put together a, how you can help, that's a, something that's on the town website. So again, I think, you know, we're, I would ask that, you know, we'll, we'll try to start recruiting people for the November election. Because there's gonna be a jam, you know, we're gonna be pretty busy, so I think the more...
We're gonna have a signup list, John, do you think? Do we have, we get an email address and a phone number?
Yeah.
It'd be great to get those, those put together now.
Now, yeah, and then we can continue to kind of poke at them. But Jennifer had put together volunteering at the elections for, for setup or ballot counting for town meeting. So again, this is kind of a, just a, what they can do. So again, as people are saying, just what can I do? Well, here, this is, this is something you could do, I don't think we're, we're not electioneering or anything. We're not saying vote for cer- certain person, so.
It's just asking for help.
Asking for help, what can I do? Well, this is what you can do, you know? And please get ahold of us, and like you say, David, I like that, you know, let's take your name and number and your email, so.
I know we always seem to be doing like after the fact, and I, I don't see any reason we can't be proactive, get that listed.
Correct.
And then use that list every election, try, try these people out, maybe send emails out and see if they're willing to do it, because.
Yeah.
I personally love it when the younger kids get involved.
Yeah. So Jennifer and I had that discussion on, on Monday as well about getting some of the younger kids involved, because again, now with the new laws, if you're seventeen years old, you're gonna sit, you can help.
Yeah.
At the, the elections. But again, we're a little too, in my opinion, I think we're behind the time, you know, we're, we're not able to really recruit people. I think maybe for November, we can reach out to the high school or to the low high school and say, hey, is there a political club in town or at school that, you know, the kids would wanna assist? And we just need to be more, you know, better understanding.
A lot of the kids we were getting, their parents had been doing it, and they're following their parents there, and it's good to see them taking over, coming into that responsibility.
Yes, yeah.
And they're confirmation that Joe Miliotto will be there all day.
Yes, I got that this morning too. Yeah, I saw it, got you from a lot of texts there. I think that's pretty much, that's all I really have on my list.
School, school closed or open that day?
School is open.
I did have one, one town person who's been on our, this was the last election or the election before. But they stated that the ballot clerk that they came up to, to ask for their, you know, whether Republican or Democrat, asked if they weren't sure they wanted the other party. And they were a little taken back, they didn't know how to take it, so maybe, I don't know, maybe the person was confused or not, because, you know, we have some elderly people doing those positions, so maybe we can just reiterate that to them, that make sure they're giving them the right one and...
Yeah, yeah.
Person didn't really know how to take it, they don't know if they were joking or what they were, so.
Yeah.
I just thought maybe we could reiterate that with the people there at that very front counter, because it's about, yeah. But obviously, the rest of it, they already have it in their hand, you know, so the first initial ask.
Okay. And again, there's always three sides to a story.
Right.
Yeah, so.
So, I think they could have been joking for all that.
Exactly, yeah.
I've been known to joke a little bit.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Yeah. You're right.
So. I don't know, any other questions from you gentlemen?
Look forward to a nice, smooth day.
Yeah, I would agree. Again, I don't know how busy it's gonna be, I don't think it's gonna be like November.
I want to thank Jennifer for reaching out and using our local person in the morning, our local cafe here, because I think it goes a long way in sharing, sharing it. Giving us a little bit different. If we run out of coffee, I'll go for another coffee.
Yeah, we'll keep you there too.
That's right.
You won't be disappearing for four hours, right?
Four.
GPS tracker.
Yeah.
You can't talk, you're missing both of them, the left.
Jennifer, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, yes, so, um, after the last election, we ran into a situation where we didn't have a pay rate set for one of the positions. Most people, I was trying to mention volunteer, which is awesome, but on the occasions when somebody is requesting to be paid, which is perfectly legitimate, I don't know if we want to set those tonight necessarily, but they should be on the radar, because we could run into that sort of situation again.
I think we should look at, do you have suggestions for us tonight?
So, the, the three positions we identified are greeter, pro temp selectman, and pro temp town clerk.
Now, pro temp town clerk and pro temp selectman are pretty large jobs. You have a lot, a lot of hours taken there. What was the first one?
Greeter.
Greeter at the door. And what pay rates are you suggesting for them?
I have a, I have the current ballistic, I have the answer.
As far as like the deputy town clerk, using that pay rate?
I don't know, not necessarily.
There's moderator.
Yeah.
Supervisory checklist, ballot clerk.
Ballot counter.
And ballot counter.
So, so my, when Jennifer and I spoken on Monday, again, and we're just recommendations, and I think again, feel free, Jennifer.
This is what you had said.
Yeah, so again, a greeter would be totally the same rate as a ballot clerk, they need to be knowledgeable in what, you know, in the regulations, you need to be regula-, knowledgeable in, you know, pointing out the people and what to say and what not to say. So it is kind of, you're not just...
Can I ask why there's just a few cents difference between a ballot counter and a ballot clerk? One is ten eighteen and the other one's ten forty-four?
Not just the way that the increases went when you guys settled.
Can we make those even, so that they're not?
Whatever.
All different?
Can we go just through, David, if you don't mind, can we go through these?
Your recommendations.
Our recommendations is, because it's really you gentlemen setting them, okay?
So it's ballot clerk?
Yeah, for greeters.
That's what you're suggesting.
Yeah, that's what we're suggesting, yeah. The pro temp selectman would basically be, again, it's my understanding, you gentlemen get paid your millions of dollars as part of your yearly salaries anyways.
Yes.
So our, our thought was, again, that that being the same rate as a ballot clerk rate.
I agree, yeah, good recommendation.
Yeah, the pro temp town clerk would be equivalent to the moderator rate, again, because the town clerk rate is, she gets it in her salary anyways. So again, my, our thinking was that that person needs to be as knowledgeable as the, as the town moderator as well, so.
That seems reasonable.
And a pro temp town clerk, are you talking just a few hours or?
A pro temp town clerk would be if the town clerk couldn't be, like, God forbid, the town clerk and deputy town clerk couldn't be there, we needed somebody else very knowledgeable to stand in, or one of us, you know, I don't, don't foresee something like that, but as, as we were identifying that we don't have a pay rate for pro temp selectman, it came up like, well, what about if we were, didn't have a town clerk? And somebody had to...
Lean, if you can give me that, unless from her, I'll make the motion. I think those rates, I mean, the ten forty-four for ballot clerk and the moderator rate is the sixteen oh seven.
I, I, I think the recommendations are, I have no issues with her in a lot of...
So I think that maybe the meeting minutes will speak for themselves, but I'll make a motion to use the town clerk's suggestion for the rates for those three positions.
Moderator's suggestion.
Yeah, ballot clerk will be ten forty-four and the moderator position will be sixteen oh seven. For those appropriate positions.
Second that, did you want to adjust the motion to change that other rate over on that?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to make ballot counter the same rate as ballot clerk and supervisor checklist, and move it from ten eighteen to ten forty-four.
I'll second that.
Do we have discussion or?
Oh, sure. Motion been made, seconded, do we have any discussion?
I would personally think that the ballot clerks and the supervisors of the checklist, they need to do a lot more training than a ballot counter. So if there was an adjustment, I would think it might be possibly ballot clerks and supervisors going up.
Okay.
Rather than the counters going up, because that's mostly people are just showing up and helping to count ballots.
Yeah.
In the evening, so, or maybe it should be...
That's a second shift though, so they should get more money.
Or maybe, you know, revisit it another time.
Why don't we revisit another time?
There from seven, seven at night. Why don't we just talk about the three positions they've proposed, we had no name.
We'll revisit, yeah.
Right, we had no, so at least it puts them on notice.
And why don't we do that, why don't we do everything else in the fall?
Here, we take a motion off the table.
How do you take it off?
Yeah, you just made a motion and seconded.
Was it seconded?
Yes.
You get the second to withdraw?
Yeah.
Yeah, withdraw your second.
I withdraw my second motion. So, so then there's no motion, because there's no second.
It's dead. Or you can't, can't you just vote it down? You can't, but you're just not gonna six or one, six or one and a half dozen of them?
So you just wanna make the vote, yeah.
We're gonna take a vote now, for those three positions.
For those three positions, and that's it.
Yep, so motions on the table for those three positions, been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else, Jennifer?
Um, yes, I wanted to reiterate that we're glad to be trying the cafe, as was suggested a few years ago at a selectmen's meeting, I think, so we're, we're doing that, we'll see how it goes. It may put us a little over budget, we were actually already a little over budget on food, but we're under budget on personnel for elections. So I think we'll be fine, assuming we have the same numbers of people that are volunteering their time instead of requesting to be in pain.
Who could save some money if you three gentlemen bring in lunch and dinners, if you don't mind?
That's our only payment.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
And that's cheap payment for me.
Just a suggestion.
Is there a grill there? We're gonna lose him for another day. Four hours.
Okay, also pertaining to elections, we're at the point in the cycle where our retention periods for certain boxes of ballots from a few years ago, or even from this past town meeting, can now be marked for destruction and shredded. But we haven't had the time and wherewithal and the little shredder to like, you know, spend all the hours necessary to do that. And we have four boxes now, one of which I think we started working on. And we have three more that are coming up next week that could be destroyed. So we have a lot of boxes of ballots and we're running out of room.
You want to send them out to be shredded?
So we'd like to shred them, send them out, yeah, to a service.
I'm fine with that, right.
Just it's, with, with this on top of everything, it's just that, it's nice.
Me with lean and have it happen.
We, we usually have the one in the costume.
Yeah.
But, but yeah, to have them, I don't know that anybody can bring them down, I can't easily bring them down there myself.
Sometimes they have to pick up too.
Yeah, so it could be a pickup.
If not, we can make sure I might get some.
Well, it has to come from the town clerk's office directly to the shredding service. So.
So come here and pick them up.
What she's asking for help is to get them off the shop, so they won't bear a hag, so, is that what you want?
No, and have, actually shred.
I know, to have the shredding service come to pick up. Here? Yeah. Oh, okay, I'll check into that, we haven't done that before, but I have seen him at the school doing that, so.
Yeah, doesn't that, northeast?
Yeah.
There's a, there's a similar company that do that. I don't think there's any shortage.
Okay, a few other town clerk business things. Back several months ago, when we had transitioned from Linda to me, I had to apply as DMV Municipal Registration Agent for Dunbarton. So last month, they sent that retroactively removed from May. How did that happen? With that technical personnel file and whatever we need.
Congratulations. Is this mean we can do votes now?
No, that would be separate training and more software and... Put that in a personal phone, Jennifer? Yes, please. And what?
You all want to hang on the wall?
What's that?
Do you want to hang on the wall too?
I have a copy.
Under, okay.
This is, this is a book, this is a nice copy, a scanned copy, I have the original, so, we're good on that. And also, so early August, I spent a week at the certification training offered by the New Hampshire City and Town Clerks Association. It's a three-year program, so assuming I complete the third year next August and pass the exam that follows afterwards, I would be a certified town clerk like Linda. This is the certification for the second year of the program.
One more year to go there.
Yes, one more year to go, play it works in the schedule.
Very nice.
Okay, so, and as has been painfully obvious, I did get injured the week after that, out hiking. But fortunately, because of that training, I had identified someone who was thrilled to come and help in our office. And I want to thank all of you and Lee from the bottom of my heart for rushing and having an emergency meeting, so that we could hire Pam Luhl as an assistant town clerk, and she could help out. It's been wonderful, and I really, really appreciate the way all three of you came in the middle of a workday, so that we could make that happen. And DMV also rushed things on their end, so that has been super great. But that she's just available Thursdays though.
And she already worked a couple Thursday for you?
She's worked two now.
And it's worked, worked out well?
Yes, yeah, it's been great to have her there, and she likes working here. So yes, that very week you met, she, she worked two days later.
It was plain, yeah.
Yeah, so that has worked out well. I realize that this injury is kind of poor timing with the elections and with Linda's vacation, and it's just, so I have closed the office a, a few Wednesdays, just because I can't afford to be on my foot all day, too many days in a row. I've been working plenty of overtime hours in spite of this, as John said, we met Wednesday, Monday, it was here ten and a half hours Monday. So it's, it's unfortunate, and Linda and I are gonna be working on a schedule post-election, what we can do. I do apologize to the public as well for those closures. But we will still be closed election day and the day after, just because even by the end of election day, we may have, you know, we usually have put thirty hours that week.
Right, right.
You know, not more. I also wanted to say thank you to all of the town employees, because they have been wonderful, I want, you know, they've been really great. And, you know, if I need a ream of paper, or they can go grab the mail for me without me asking. So I just want to say kudos to my fellow town employees, because they've been wonderful. And the last thing I have is that, so with Pam here last Thursday, it was so critical, because we just, we were really slammed all morning long. And so even with her doing all the motor vehicle transactions, I still had the elections and the vital records, and I was back and forth and on my feet for straight three and a half hours, pretty much, and it wasn't until one that I even put my leg up for fifteen minutes, you know what I mean, like, it was just slammed. And it made me realize that we're gonna need to think about having a second desk in front, to be able to serve the public. And the good thing is, it's not just about my injury, but it's also moving forward as the town is growing, it's not infrequent that we are waiting on multiple people at once, and this, that would make it easier. So I'm gonna be, the details are TBD, but I'm gonna be thinking about how can we shift things in the office, maybe have an additional workstation, so we can have two people out front waiting on people. Because even though I have Linda or Pam there, it's really busy to help streamline, and then it's a lot of walking. So. But you guys have been supportive, and I have no doubt you voted, I just wanted...
Yeah, there's something, there's something we can help you out, I mean, we've gotten different desks for people before, and different arrangements, so let us know if there's something we can do to help, I'm sure we will.
I'm sure you will too, I just want to give you a heads up, I'm gonna be rethinking the office layout and what we can do to make that, make it not just good for now with the injury, but for long term.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I was asking if I can just ask, my subject matter expert, Mr. Mullin, we covered everything, any suggestions you should talk about?
You guys got your tally sheets and everything all ready?
We get the, the tally sheet going, but we're working on the, the individual ones for the, for the staffs.
Yeah, they don't care.
Yeah.
So you all have a tally?
Uh, yeah, it's in works, yeah.
Did we do tally sheets as on the run last, of the last election?
I'm sorry?
Did we make tally sheets up on the run at the last election, or?
Uh, no, they were, they were made up.
They were made up, yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you guys for coming.
See you Monday afternoon.
See you Monday.
John? I think you're up next too, I think we're gonna review the proposal on your garage doors to replace those other three.
Okay.
Those two look beautiful in the building, and I, driving by, I think we've consent, had consensus of those other three should be done, and you guys had the quote. And Lee has stated that they're gonna continue on and keep that quote from twenty twenty four for us.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. And the three additional doors would be a total of fifteen, one, seven, eight. And this is a company that we had already vetted to do the garage doors on the two big ones we just replaced, Aloha Garage Doors. Any of the selectmen have any other questions?
No, I'm just talking to the voters.
Any of the public have any questions about it?
I guess I have a question for you, are you happy with the new doors?
Yes.
Great. These are overhead operators, right, not wall-mounted operators, looks like?
They work, they work.
Yeah, and you're happy with the overhead operator?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Aloha Garage Doors in the amount of fifteen, one, seven, eight, to install three more garage doors that are twelve by ten, white, with one row of tinted glass, with the, with the Liftmaster openers.
Second that.
Motion been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Well, thank you for helping, helping get that ruined. Thank you.
And hopefully, we're gonna get some signs to look at pretty shortly.
I'll get on that.
Oh, I didn't mean all that.
I'll send them a couple of, I think the last time you responded, it was a biggie.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, we'd like to acknowledge the volunteers and help assemble the fire department front doors, increase the opening size to fit the new doors in there, and reconstruct the front. The first one I'm gonna call up is Jeff Trexler for helping us design the structural repairs on that. Thank you, Jeff, for all you do, just a thank you card from the...
This is unnecessary.
More selectmen in the town.
I appreciate it.
It's not unnecessary, you do a lot for the town, and just a little something to thank you for that time.
Everybody does a lot for the town, so, thank you.
Thank you. And I couldn't read the print, so they were good.
All good.
The next one is Larry Como, I'd like you to come up and accept this as well, Larry put, how many days in there, Larry?
I don't know, it doesn't really matter.
Several weeks worth of work there anyway.
Couple to four.
Helping with some of the destruction.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Blake.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, Larry sits down, I just want to personally thank him.
Yeah.
What he did, also have a gift certificate for you, from the Firefighters Association. Dunbar Firefighters Association, appreciate what you did. Larry had to put up for me for four or five days, so.
That's for simple, you had to put up for me. Somebody's been to trade for thirty years, I was not always nice to you.
I mean, there's a lot of people think they're contractors, like me. Larry is a contractor, I'll tell you.
He knows what he's doing.
Did an excellent job.
Thank you.
I appreciated the work, man. I was able to change my schedule around, I had a breakdown with a tractor, so worked out a game for five days. Originally, we thought we might try to get firefighters doing on a weekend or something, but it just didn't work out, so. It worked out, good, looks good. It worked out good. Looks great. Lot of positive comments on it. People in town, they don't even know, probably say, oh, those doors are good on the station, so.
Glad to help.
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
Covers a little bit of the expenses.
Meet all of us.
Yep.
But it's a volunteer fire department and we all need to do volunteer work in it to keep our taxes down. That helps too.
Well, we didn't intend, we didn't intend for all that labor to be volunteered for you. So for you to do that, my hat goes off to you.
Lot of, lot of work.
Lot of problems.
Lot of days.
All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Another helping project, Lynn in the office made contact electricians. Jay Alvedale, Dave Ortonalumba came by a couple times to check that one. Not as much as I thought.
It was too good.
I didn't have to stop by much. Justin led us some fencing and we put up a knife. I don't think we lost anything.
Well, I think we found right next door. I think we're shaking.
Yeah, they're going to get in. They're going to get in, ain't they, guys? Kind of just, you know. Just the honest people.
Honest, yeah.
Appreciate lending those to us. So everybody worked again.
John, while you're up here, we have one for you as well. You didn't have to put your additional time in. It wasn't part of your fire department time to help him do the construction.
That it wasn't, but he was there, did yeoman's duty.
Lynn told me that she was, he was there working with you even though he might have slowed you down.
Sure. I learned a lot though.
All right. Well, thank you.
Part of his days and months.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. It's nice to see some volunteering going on in the town of Dunbar still.
There's a lot of volunteers in town.
Thank all for you. Okay. We have some revenues here. On this page through review.
Yes, so in reviewing the Department of Revenue's website, I realized that we still have one outstanding item and that's to review the revenues that we set as a projection at town meeting. You have the system report that we would have a current year budget was in the center. Current year to date revenue to the right and then uncollected balance to the very far right. I reviewed each of them.
You said on current land use, it was looking pretty good still on that?
It's very, very good. So right now, it shows that we've collected thirty-two thousand to date with an uncollected twenty-eight thousand. But in the Board of Assessors basket as we speak, there's another twenty-one ninety-five that needs to be signed off on tax warrants. And that'll leave us with a six thousand seventy-five dollar uncollected balance. I have, I believe we're going to exceed this number because we have at least four or five pending that we're just waiting for construction to move forward and or property transfers. So we're doing really well with land use change tax. I have no doubt that we will meet that goal of sixty thousand. The timber tax, you can see the next category, we've exceeded that by sixteen thousand nine thirty-six because we have three in the Board of Assessors mailbox to sign warrants for nineteen twenty-four. Other taxes, we have exceeded our small budget of five hundred by three hundred and sixteen. Moving on to the next category, thirty-one ninety or all the other interest and other costs. We budget typically ten thousand for the whole group. We're a little short on that by fifty-six sixty-one, but the increases on the other lines will help offset that. That's just a best guess that we have used for previous years. Page two at the top is the business vehicle registrations. We, the revenues you see there, six hundred thirty-two, four ninety-six is through August. We still have four months remaining for vehicle registrations. That would be an average of thirty-five, six twenty-six. The average from January through August is roughly about eighty thousand dollars. So we will beat our projected seven seventy-five revenue, I'm sure. And even just based on previous year's history. Building codes, we've already exceeded the budget of thirty thousand by two hundred and fourteen. The next group is thirty-two ninety category and we budget ten thousand. We've exceeded that budget category by thirteen oh six, so we're looking good there. Revenues from the other governments. The first one there is highway block grant. We budgeted ninety-five thousand. We currently have seventy-four, three thirty-one. There's one more payment due in October. That is set at thirty-two, six seventy. We're just waiting for it to bank. So we, the D R A will adjust our ninety-five thousand at tax rate setting to the hundred and seven thousand three dollars. So that's something that when state revenue comes in, we can't play with it. We have to apply to tax rate. And then the federal force, P I L T, that is a federal payment receiver every year. It ranges between three thousand and four thousand this year. I've got, I received a payment of four thousand seven dollars. So the D R A will adjust our three thousand dollar budget up to match the monies received. The next page top is flood control. I just received that payment this week and that is seventy-one, one twenty-eight, which is a thousand eleven twenty-eight. Over our projected budget, the D R A will adjust our actual revenues at tax rate setting. And so that area looks pretty good. There is a state revenue that I'm not sure if I can get them to remove it. It's the milfoil grant that was on an article for twelve hundred bucks. We, well, I don't set anything at revenue on the match side, but we identify the grant side. But we were told again this year, there was no milfoil in any of the ponds. So that one will not come to fruition. We won't have anything on our, from the capital reserve fund and we won't be getting any match from the state. So I don't know what she'll say and I'll ask her about it. What do we do with the twelve hundreds? It's minor. Income from departments.
The twelve hundreds only goes into that fund. We have a revolving fund for that.
Yeah, there's about eighteen thousand in that.
Basic species.
From capital reserve. But we also would have a match in the town's revenue. The next category is thirty-four oh one, which is income from departments. That group, we usually combine total is fifty-five thousand for a budget. Income from the recycling is set, is about sixteen thirty-five over the projected twenty-five thousand. But I also have two checks on my desk for two thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars combined. So that will go up even more. And then there's also some pending revenue from special duty admin that we have billed to the companies that hire our police officers. There's still three thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars outstanding that we have not yet collected. So that one, we do not put a budget in there, but we will see some revenue come in. So it says that we have outstanding eight thousand six seventy-nine, but we really only have about two thousand six hundred. So we're right on the mark for income with departments. Next category, we don't really budget anything because those are unknowns. Sale of town properties deeds, sale of equipment. This year we haven't had much, actually zero in that category. Interest in department and on deposits, we've almost recouped a whole one thousand. We're at nine fifty-four to date, but we have again four months of revenue to add to that. And they usually runs about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. And then further down, miscellaneous revenue. I did research that. Miscellaneous revenue was from a refund on an overpayment to the Hampshire Retirement before one hundred and seventy-three. And then we had some voided checks from twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two that we moved to the revenue based on the auditor's recommendation. So that's just a one-time shot. And then if, when we get to the MS four thirty-four, the very bottom, the four thirty-four, page three, the D R A also includes the other warrants. So monies being moved in from special funds. Article nine is for the fire department ambulance. We're taking two hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred and four from the special ambulance fund. Article fifteen is the milfoil twelve hundred dollars. Article eight is the fire department truck, which we're expending from this capital reserve, four hundred and forty-three thousand. And then article eleven is for the highway capital withdrawal of a hundred and eight thousand. And that's where on that very last inter operating transfer in is eight hundred and forty-five, seven fifty-four. So all the accounts before that are in this report. And then the D R A adds the outside source revenues for a total of two million one thirty-six, four fifty-four. And then the appropriations that we authorized at town meeting are two million six twenty-one ninety-four. So I don't see anything in these numbers that I would recommend changing. I think they're looking really good, but I do need to discuss it with you because I have to submit this in order to set that grade.
Looks great.
Any questions from the board?
Just cross your fingers on the middle of the meals.
Yes, yeah. That's one of the items that's not in this, these account numbers yet.
When do we see that?
Pardon?
When do we see them?
When we, yeah, she'll look at the numbers and that's when she can set the tax rate. And then I'll have to make the entry. So if you're all set, I can file this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you Lynn for taking care of that. Okay. Steve, I think you're on the agenda next to come up to the board. You're from eighty Robert Rogers Road. You walked into the office and asked to have a meeting with the select ward?
No, I called them if you didn't recall them.
Okay.
All right. I want to, you are reasonable guys.
We try to be.
And I don't think I can win from you, okay? That's the one thing. But I want to revisit my case in order, you know, different because I want to tell you, first of all, I'm seventy-two years old retired man. Okay, live on, so you see already. So the idea was that I will build something and maybe you'll help me with that to build, you know? And I did get all that information and I borrowed all the parts. I spent a lot of money on parts and it took me almost three months to dig and start up and building that, okay? And I did get it, but I wish I had met the, you know, artful guy, you know, the urban guy. So my system is ready, just needed to be turned on. And I have not everything that we talked about that New Hampshire inspector will inspect. And that's what he made at the beginning.
Yeah.
And I have done that. He came a couple nights back and he told me, well, this thing is not this right. I even fixed those things too. And I put those ground rods, they asked me to put everything. Got even that, everything was done. So now the problem is he keeps adding stuff to that. And these panels are two hundred feet away from my house, okay? And the wire that comes underneath is eight inches deep and is in in a conduit, you know, sealed conduit in there, you know? But I didn't try to get, you know, corner because I know there's a lot of wind here and blow a lot of wind here. And it has stood sixty miles an hour. You know, I have no problem with it. So I need you to please revisit it. I'm living here over thirty years, by the way. Dunbar. I have no problem with anybody. Good people. So I made, did that. I spent a lot of money and I have did a lot of work. My system is ready, is safe. And few technicality, you know, they hold it in there. So I want you to please reconsider this.
Now it seems like you've come a long way. You're right down the wire, it seems like, with a couple of small things. What are the items that he's waiting for from you?
Well, what he said was, you know, if you look at this here, he says you didn't dig deep enough.
On the conduit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the conduit, nobody goes on the back. I never seen anybody go back other than I moved along. There's no traffic going over it.
What depth is he asking? For eighteen inches?
I think he, yeah, eighteen inches and I had like eight inches.
Okay.
These few technicality and also he wanted to dig up, you know, how deep I had those things on the back. I said, well, it's my, if that thing, any damage comes over there, it's my loss, okay? It's way back there. It's not going to hurt anybody, you know? Nobody's ever been there. So let me please use my system to do that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm only going to speak for myself on the board, but I don't think we're going to override those people's decisions that we've, they have in place to make sure that it's safe.
See, when I came to you guys, because I couldn't deal with him and I came to you guys for help and you said we were going to call the New Hampshire inspector to give him inspect and that's what he inspected. I even asked him, I said, you know, I may not have deep in there. And he said, you are okay there. He really did ask him that. And he, you are okay.
I guess it won't hurt for us to reach out to the state inspector and just ask him to provide us, you know, with his information again, just so it's current for us. It's been a couple of months, I think, since he's been in front of us. I don't mind doing that.
But I asked him, I said, you know, you never said anything about that, you know, how deep it is. And he said, well, I thought they told you that. I said, no. That's what he told me. I thought they told you. I said, you never mentioned anything, how deep that thing is. And it is safe. You know, it's safe in there and my system does not move.
So it sounds like you have...
There's no technicality holding back, you know?
Sounds like you have two issues. You got your sonotubes or whatever holding up. Talking about the depth of those.
That's what he's saying.
Depth of your conduit.
I may not have enough depths, that he's saying, you know, but it is very strong. Five, six hundred feet. But that is the only technicality holding. But I can, if you have liability issue, I can even sign it any paper, you know? You know, but you're not a responsible board.
What's the rest of the board's thoughts?
I'd like to get an opinion from the state inspector. I think if there was a problem with our inspector, let's keep our inspector out of it.
Yeah.
But I'd like to get the independent, unbiased state inspector to give us a report and a final report. In other words, he made two trips out there and it's be fair to him. And I'd like to make sure that if there's any more deficiencies, it's one report. I don't want to have three, then it comes out again, three weeks has you do something else and then three weeks later have you do something else. I want a final report of what's wrong with the system or what's right with the system and to give us recommendations as it's safety.
There is a summary report in that package. But that's from the department.
Yeah, see, he came twice. Second time he came and he told me about the conduit, that was using it wrong right.
Right.
But I think it's...
There's never said anything about the depth was concerned.
Right. So I think I'd like to get his opinion of where we go from here. A final report from him, what needs to be done and what doesn't need to be done. I think it was, in my, in my heart, I think it was unfair to you that he didn't identify everything. Maybe he just felt there was too many things, but he should have. You, you were going to do, in my heart, you were going to do all the right things, but then it comes out and tells you to do more.
Yeah, that's right.
And I, I, I realize that's, that's a pain in the rear end to have to do it that way. But at the same time, he, he's got rules to follow. And so I need to get, I need to get more data from him, as far as inspection.
I have asked him about that depth and he told me it's okay.
Well, then, then he should put that in his report.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll reach out to him and we'll ask him to provide us a final report. And then whether you want to come back in front of us or how about send you an email from Lynn or whatever we can do. However you want to do it, we can do it.
Well, I can come here, you know, you can send me an email.
Okay. But I, I think we get the state back out here and get some information.
Yeah, but you got to ask him. Then I did ask him when he came in.
About the depth?
That this is the depth and he said it's okay. And then he, then I told him, you know, why he's saying that now depth. And he said, well, he, they told me that, they already told me that.
I think, I think in our email, did we make the same, we just talked, mentioned the depth issue?
Yeah.
Well, you don't think that'd be fair to the general?
Well, it is safe though. I mean, I can say, you know, you can move it around and tell me that it's any danger to anything or you can make an exception, you know, let me use...
Well, the thing is, let's see what the inspector has to say, okay?
Oh, thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's close. I'm going to go into mailbox items to try and keep this meeting moving a little bit. Let me grab my list of mailbox items here. Okay. We have a building report that I'd like to get a read that we just discussed from our own... We have a building report, uh that I'd like to get a read, that we just discussed, um from our own time building department. So, let's go ahead and update that, and uh look at that on our own time, and we'll-
Okay.
Is that through email?
Yeah, can you send an email through us, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
We got an email from Chief Ramlerz in reference to our four-way intersection, Page's Corner, the all-way stop has been working very good.
You know, the day, the day he sent that, the day he sent that, I'm like, Page's Corner, I'm great, I was so proud of that, it was so, and I'm getting ready to make a turn, and someone goes zipping right through the stop sign.
I did see somebody do a California stop there myself, but um-
But the thing is, the fact that the accident rate is down, it's a win-win.
And they were going somewhat slower than before, so it was kind of a win for them to put that in file there.
No, no, let's, let's keep, let's keep that going.
We have another email, Clem Madden, from the um school in Dunbar, and the elementary school in Sheller Westburg Center regarding damage to a lawn mat. We actually, um, Lane reached out to the mowing company, just to let them, and make them aware of it, and they offered to pay for it, they wish they had a chance to buy the mats themselves, but we decided to go ahead and let this go, and let them pay for them since they offered, uh we weren't gonna charge them this time, just make them aware of it, but it sounds like a win-win getting them paid for, so we're gonna let that go through, you wanna let Shelley and Clem know?
Yeah.
Just so they're happy that we got replacement cost.
On the bills for those, are they processed through the town here?
Uh, yes, because they're responsible for all of it.
And so, when the revenue, when the reimbursement will go to your, with the revenues, the town or town?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, this week when I was in to sign the paperwork, there was an auditor request signatures by the town administrator and chairman of the board, I did sign that, um, this week with Lane. I read through the entire thing, and the audit procedures look corrected here, there was no faults listed. We get an email here from Pro Technologies, um regarding a failed smoke detector, they said the smoke is at the top of the basement stairs not working, wrong type of unit, not enough power. That doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, since we put new panels in there. Smoke at the top of the ceiling, the front door is non-functional, new smoke detector installed at the right height, failed unit needs to be removed per fire code.
Were these new fire units that were put in within new construction?
One was, uh, the one at the top of the old stairs was an older one.
Okay.
And they replaced that, they just didn't bring the proper scaffolding, they take down the old one, so it has to be noted that it's in place and non-functional, so.
But the one in the basement stairs is yours.
They're talking about second floor, right?
Yeah, second floor in that fire stairwell.
Right, but the other one that's non-functional is in front.
Yeah. So the non-functional one, I asked Lane to reach out to um the electric company.
I already sent it to them.
For-
Irish, Irish Electric.
Irish Electric.
For warranty possibility?
Well, for warranty possibility, because if they did install that one, and the power isn't, not to make it function proper, which I don't understand, maybe they're low voltage power, is that what those things are, and that's-
He draw, it'd be anything, it should be on point.
But I just can't understand this, so I asked them to look into it, then once they look into it, they'll tell us, I'm sure.
I forwarded that.
Well, they're at it, Lane, if they come out to check it out.
Yeah.
Could you have them bring a, a proper ladder to take them a little bit out of there?
Yeah.
Instead of having maintenance guy do it.
What are you gonna do, just put a cover over it?
Yeah.
Take that off and put a cover on it?
It's in the stairwell way up, it's up twenty, twenty feet high above the stairs, I don't even know, anybody ever looked in there yet.
We're talking the old one, not the new addition.
Yeah.
There's two of them.
Not the new addition, the old one way up high.
Yeah, it's been an issue for twenty, fifteen years.
Years. Yeah.
Because the other guy could never get to it either, no one could ever get to it.
So they'll bring a ladder, I'm sure, and they'll be able to block it up and get up there.
Yeah.
So. That takes care of that. Okay. We got an email from Donna White to clarify the procedures for the building on a class six road, um, I did see it, I did see something on this when I was reading it, that uh she said it would go to the planning office, the police department, the fire department, and then the highway department.
I, I thought it was a, a good step forward, just to simplify the procedures.
It is, the only thing is, uh, the planning board needs to be, they need to be notified that it doesn't just go to the planning office, but the actual planning board actually gives us recommendations back after they receive all those.
She did, she did.
So I did wanna make sure that the people that were coming up to look at that list knew that they were gonna have to attend a planning board meeting.
Gotcha, and I thought it was a good step to help.
Yeah.
Because we have a policy, but policy didn't really delineate the steps.
Yeah, it's pretty confusing too.
Yeah.
Lane has in front of us here a proposal for new town door lock, the one that currently out there, she has to hook up with a wire to re-code it for additional people and taking off old people, old select people and stuff, so, um the proposal is for a service call seventy-five dollars, the locks out, some sell, there's two sets of them, twenty-two hundred dollars each, for a total of forty-four hundred dollars, and then the gateway, uh laptop program at five-eighty-five. The total on this is five thousand sixty dollars, it's from um a locksmith out of Gosstown Lock in Keith, which is the guy that did the original ones. She said she would like to update this, so she can have, done without, we'll get up to a wired, um, you guys' thoughts on those two locks?
I think we need another quote on this, because one quote is gonna say that's pretty excessive, yeah, I don't know if that's normal price or not.
I don't know, I'm not versed in that.
There, there are, there are not a lot of companies that provide that kind of service install, um-
Uh, even if we just, we should at least make the attempt to, we'll get a different, another, uh, some price options here.
Okay, I do the models, but he did say that that, those prices would hold through October, because in, towards the end of the year, for the new year, they'll have new models, and then prices will go up, so.
We got a little bit of time.
Get some time to shop on.
Yeah, but I think if we reach out to a couple people, see if we can get them on the price.
Maybe even another locksmith out of Concord or something like that.
Yeah.
I know a lot of places that sell them, but they don't sell them and install them, so we need a, a full-service locksmith.
Yeah.
I just never done it before, so I don't know if that's normal price or not.
I could get pricing on the hardware, but still, I'm still.
I've done, I brought keys there personally, that are master of keys, and they don't do the full service, but I will double-check to make sure that that's the case.
Dave Smith just got out of town, he's a lot.
Is he still doing it?
He is still doing it?
Oh, yeah, making his money.
Okay.
And he goes to Florida.
Who's that that's still doing it?
Dave Smith, he used to be on the fire department?
So business, eh?
Alright, the last thing on this agenda is, we have an email from Donna White asking to approve her new retirement date, she'd like to move her retirement date out to twelve-thirty-one-twenty-five instead of four-thirty-twenty-five, I have no issue with that.
I absolutely no issue with that.
I have no issues with that. No issues, consensus from the board, you've let her sail and-
Okay.
We should, but what are we gonna do, um, for a succession plan on that?
When it comes to budget season, we'll overlap some of the money, so she can have three or four months to train somebody. So, in the middle of next year, we'll-
Try and start looking for somebody.
Yeah.
I would say he's three months out.
Yeah.
At least.
Reasonably, yeah.
Yeah, maybe if we advertise a few, few months prior to that, too.
Whatever, or your solar project, just let's give back to you, Lane.
Yeah, I'll get that off you as well.
So we'll all read that, um, I wanted to bring up one more subject here, um we have a, we have a price that we just received from Norton for hauling our um trash to Concord, when Woody was on vacation. The billing came in this year at eight hundred, the previous billing last year in August was four-eighty, last year we had Justin haul some loads for us, and I think we moved his rate to three hundred. Woody's going on vacation in a week or so for three weeks straight, he is getting a um call from Norton tomorrow, Notton and son, to see if they're gonna hold the four-eighty, or if we're gonna be paying eight hundred. If the case is that, I would like to make a motion that if we, if we haul in-house from either Justin, Pete, or John, that is a four-hundred dollar round trip. Mike, you wanna second that motion?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, so motion was made and seconded, so any in-house hauling, whether it be from John, because he's aware of the truck and can drive it, Peter, Gamache, or Justin? The only thing is, if we do go in-house for hauling that, instead of using Notton, I'd like to make sure we have a commitment from somebody to do it all of the weeks, or most of the weeks, while Woody's gone.
Or it can be split up between weeks, one week, one week.
As long as, as long as we have prior commitment, so we're not chasing somebody down, so Tuesdays and Thursdays are the hauling days. Um, we did hire somebody to do hauling in-house, and he will probably have the containers out and ready for just pickup, and all tarped up, so you're not doing that portion of the job, but he's not ready to go on road full-time, um, on his own yet, so.
We're just telling our, just that, why you guys are moving right out, just because of the extended wait time?
Yeah, um, over at, over at the recitements, no, you're the recite center, what's it, Windlard, Wind Waste?
Yeah, I think Wind Waste up in Concord.
Wind Waste in Concord, they have just put a notice up within the last couple of weeks, Woody said, that they are gonna take their own trucks before any outside vendor as priority. So, the, the wait time has been between a half hour and two hours up there, and it might get extended, is what they're saying, to the longer length of time, so. The biggest thing is, um, Woody would leave here sometimes, it would cost us a slight bit of overtime, but at like five in the morning, to get up there at like six or six-thirty, to get in line, so he wasn't waiting a long time, and uh so, that's a, that's part of it, and I'm thinking what happened is, Notton ended up sitting there for several hours, and is charging us for that fact, which I can't blame him, because
time is money.
Trucks are a hundred and fifty or sixty an hour, so, that being said, uh, we've made the motion. The motion's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, for the in-town hauling.
I'm gonna choose myself.
And um, once Woody gets that notification back from Notton, I'll let Lane know, and we'll make a decision which way to go.
No interest? Do you wanna reach out to Peter, see if he has any interest in that number, right?
John, no.
We're gonna let him drive his truck.
Not working, um.
Is it getting repaired right now, the truck?
It's getting repaired.
Is it gonna be ready to go?
Yeah.
I'm asking.
I'm just gonna read this contract quickly here and see, I thought we had a rate change for hauling.
Yeah, about twenty-five bucks.
Yeah, but it's only C and D. That's not C and D. C and D is to their plan. I'm not sure price per ton and the hauling service. I'm not sure why we didn't get a, a price from Notton when we did this bid, but next time we will get a price from them in the bid, you put us with it?
Oh, it's not ours.
Who would allow to pay for it?
I think Woody might have gotten verbal, and then that clause is put on the bottom to say that we will not increase our rates, other than, does it say escalation?
We got an escalation clause?
Which I would say waiting an extra time is a good escalation clause.
Four hundred, four-eighty, eight-hundred and sixty, I assume.
Okay. Lane, do you have anything else for the board? Um, I'm gonna open up to public comment one more time.
Yeah, I got one item, I forgot to mention to John-
You mentioned your name, so?
Fred Mullen. I forgot to mention to John Trotia that normally they use the town podium for elections and stuff.
Yeah.
If he's looking for it, it's on the second floor of the town hall.
How'd it get up there?
I saw it up there all home day, you know, I was in, went to get the American Legion flags.
Thought that's where it was stored, I thought they brought it up there at the last time. I didn't think so, I thought it was stored.
No, there was something about, um, that went down to the school, it's like, one, environment lease, like savvy for the furniture, and so I think that's why they moved it.
Yeah, you, you're not talking the old, old one, are you?
The one that we used to have at the school.
Because we had two there.
Well, one was that uh belonged to the school, the little small one.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the one that was made for Ronald Reagan, when he ran for president.
With the speakers and then stuff?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what you saw upstairs?
Yeah.
I think we did store that one up there.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we used the other one.
I can, I can see why, because hauling it back and forth, you get snow, rain, and everything else on it, but in case he's looking for it, that's where it is.
I'll let him know one day, later when we're set up if we need it. Okay, bringing it back to town administrator, you good with us?
I have something.
Oh, you have something else, John?
Yeah. John, I get it. At the school, they've called me, and the generator is testing on Mondays instead of Sundays, somehow got off track, I don't know how it is, but it has, which bothers them, so we have a service coming, um, probably in the next month or two, that falls service on the generators, so they can do it then. I haven't looked at the panel yet, I told him I'd go over and see if I could change the day on it, not familiar with that panel, but if not, I don't know if we wanna spend the money to have, make a special trip out.
I think let's just have him come out and do it, John.
Yeah.
I think, uh-
Then they do their service early, no, part of it in their contract.
I, I would think they're gonna charge us a service call, but it's not gonna be huge money, I wouldn't think.
I did ask them what it'll cost.
Yeah.
It's not much, then.
Is it gonna put the battery in that generator, one of the batteries is bad, which they did, it's gonna change when they come next time, but, you know, if you want them to come out and do it, we'll let them come out and do it.
Now, if the battery's bad, then they replace it.
They've already given us a call, a battery, which is pretty reasonable, I don't know why they buy their batteries, but I can't buy batteries like that. But, I don't know if we will set up, step up the service, I don't know, they're usually booked right out.
We'll see what they, if they can, either move our service up or, and remind them that it's gonna need one battery or two.
Yeah, one battery.
One battery in there too, just so they, they know.
So, if they can't come soon, just have them come out and change it.
Okay.
Set up, um, the service charter, that's fine. Not?
I would rather do it than wait and let the school keep hearing that run, because we're gonna get calls on that, so, we'll let some of our calls.
Do it, okay, I wasn't sure, I just heard you say the opposite, okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the service charter, it comes from, it's, yeah, something like that.
Okay, bring it back.
The other thing is, uh-
Oh, you got nothing else, John?
Yeah.
Alright.
Uh-oh.
Run his bike.
Chicken barbecue this year is in September, I think, we've never done it when school's been in session, so.
Wanna let the kids out early?
We're gonna take a couple, maybe five spots to set up our pit, so, they already crab a long park in over there, and proud of us anyways, uh, going underneath, they have, put up, put some markings in now because they parked too close, they have a truck underneath the life session, position, and you can't get it out during the day, the school teachers park too close to it.
Right.
There's always a sign there, got knocked down, it's horrible or something, so, they, the janitor is, we has marked the driveway now, a couple markers there, so no one should park on that side of it. And I've checked on it a couple times so far this year, it seems to be they're staying on the left side of the marker, so, uh, but when parking gets tight over there, they, they take that spot by the door. And you can never get a truck out, you have to, we've gone over there during the day before and ask who's car it is and have them move it, because a forestry truck has to stay there now, since we got the new truck, doesn't fit upstairs, so.
You got, you got them changed.
We're gonna take a couple parking spots for maybe a day.
Those are gonna have a push phone broiler?
Yeah, we did an issue at least about that, we got those fixed, but, uh, anyway, so, might take a spot or two, just for a day after, you know, we do it on Sunday. But, uh, anyway, so might take a spot or two just for a day after, you know, we do it on Sunday. We don't take the pit down until Monday. So it might be a couple of days that we're taking a couple of the parking spots in case they come home.
Okay.
Could be a temporary thing.
Oh, ticket sales. Yeah, how you guys changing?
Yeah.
Just for the record, the tickets after we lock by the fifteenth?
Yeah.
For the chicken barbecue?
Yeah, we sold a lot of them, weren't they? It was a good day selling tickets.
You still got chickens coming?
Yeah, I guess. I'm not, I'm committed, but, uh-
Anything else, John?
Um, no, that's it.
All right, bring it back to the board?
Just, just one thing, I, uh, we had a lawyer come here and we were having, we had a discussion on class six roads, class five roads.
Yeah.
Um, he was kind of unclear as far as, he couldn't recall, top of his head, he didn't go into, uh, the case law and some of his, uh, opinions regarding that. And recently, a few planning board members, and one specifically came and chatted with me extensively about it and felt he was extremely, uh, made a mistake in his interpretation. So I asked Donna to send an email to him, clarify his position and how he views it. And he essentially said, he summed it up by saying, um, I'll make a, I gave a call to everybody, but I loved his last sentence. As a result of all this, uh, discussion, he said, the town of Dunbar simply lacks the authority to protect any maintenance on any portion of any road that is a class six portion. And, uh, we, we basically followed that, the SE jury in our last letter. And so it, more than anything, it reiterates, uh, uh, our decision.
What was the planning board thinking, we've maintained it for so many years and we had to-
Yes, and that was, uh, that was, it has been, it was going back in law, it had to be for twenty years in the early sixties. So that has gone way past. And, uh, and so at this point, I, I am gonna ask Donna to give, ask Lee to give the planning board chair a copy of this and he can make distribution as he sees fit. And to share the information, this is just our information. It just, it kind of reinforces what we did as a board. And that lawyer-
Well, we can send our select representative to scream at them.
I could, I could bring some reports to him this one?
If you like to, in fact, that'd be most appropriate.
She can still send them so they can review it, but you want to send them this email?
Yeah, there's those things, I don't, there's no-
Let him, let him read the whole thing?
Exactly.
I'll touch base on it.
Yeah, and I, I just feel like we're, that lawyer, our lawyer for him is, if he's wrong, he's gonna have to defend us. But I think he has had good handle on state case laws and cases, and I, I felt very comfortable with that. And it's kind of, it's kind of a different opinion from what we thought and what was written in some of the NHA, NHMA, uh, uh, guides from the past. Okay, that's all on that.
Okay, that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn it at nine, eight, fifteen.
I'll second.
Motion made second in favor?
Aye.
John, don't go away.